Let me call to order the February 5th, 2020 meeting. Committee of the whole meeting for Pottstown's Borough Council. Would you rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Okay. Let us start with a resolution and to honor one of our favorite citizens here in the town. Chief.
Okay. Recognizing Joseph M. Groff for forty years of dedicated service to the Borough of Pottstown and the Pottstown Fire Department. Whereas Joseph M. Groff has served the Borough of Pottstown as a dedicated volunteer firefighter with the Philadelphia Steam Fire Engine Company Number One for forty years. And whereas during his career with the Borough, he served in the capacity as fire chief for the Philadelphia Steam Fire Engine Company for twenty-eight years. And whereas Joe has served the Borough of Pottstown and its residents and has been called to duty at various hours of the day and night in all types of emergency response situations in order for the community to receive the best level of fire safety while saving lives and saving properties. And whereas Joe unselfishly continues to serve this Borough and the Pottstown Fire Department as a volunteer with the Philadelphia Steam Fire Engine Company Number One, sharing his expertise, qualifications, and professionalism. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the mayor and town council, that Joseph M. Groff is officially recognized for the outstanding service he has provided the Borough of Pottstown through forty years of service to the Borough of Pottstown and its residents. Adopted at Pottstown Borough Hall, 100 East High Street, this fifth day of February, 2020, by the Burgess and the Town Council of the Borough of Pottstown, signed by Dan Nguyen, President of Council, and attested by Borough Manager Justin Keller. Congratulations. Good lady. Thank you. All right. I'm told I have to do a speech. Most of you know I'm not really a speaker. So I just want to thank everybody, council, managers, everybody responsible for this award. The gentlemen standing up here with us, the young guys, I fought fire with a lot of them, but they're going to be in the future, and I feel very, very confident that they're going to support this Borough to the day they retire. So that's all I got.
Subcommittee reports. Infrastructure. Anyone here? No. Economic Development and Business Liaison is Lee Clark.
Good evening, councilors, Madam Mayor. I want to take a moment tonight to talk about Census Day, April 1st. I am a Subcommittee Chair for the county for the census. And it is important for Pottstown because it is representation. It means what representation politically we'll have in the future, what infrastructure improvements we'll get, what education funding we'll get. And Pottstown traditionally has been undercounted. Ten years ago, it was seventy percent of a response rate. I know there has been some fear about filling things out in the census. There shouldn't be that fear. The citizenship question has been struck down by the courts, so that is not on there. It's a very simple form. You can do it online, by telephone. If you don't do it within a certain amount of time, they will have what they call the enumerators come out. They will have identification, and they will come out and ask you the questions. It's important to count children. If a child has not been born by April 1st but is expected, that child is not counted. If the child comes on April 2nd and you don't answer till April 3rd, you can count the child. So those are just some important highlights that we want to get out there. You will see more and more from the county. I know the mayor spoke about it this morning. There are a lot of advocates out there like myself talking about how important the census is. We only get this every ten years. The last is a dollar figure. Five percent, just a five percent undercount throughout the county is a loss of $72 million plus. And that is every year for ten years. So that's how important it is. Okay. That's my pitch for the census.
Great.
And it's important for economic development because obviously, infrastructure projects are extremely important to the Borough of Pottstown. I want to talk just a little bit about all the great things that are going on here are important, but we also want to highlight that we have a really great inventory of office space within the Borough. PAID is highlighting for 2020 four buildings. I have some brochures for council this evening. I'd like you to share when you're out with your travels. And it's not about the space, it's the offices and the jobs or the occupants of those offices and the jobs that they will bring. And it is important, so we make sure we have lunchtime business for all that great downtown business that has located here, as well as hopefully people who will want to move into the Borough to be close to their jobs. So that is my report. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next, transportation. Anyone?
We did need.
Do you want to take it? I can cover it. Yeah. All right, that's fine.
Next month.
So we reviewed the plan for the future grant-funded projects at the airport. We also talked about the closeout for the tea hanger and taxiway paving project, which is now pretty much complete. We updated the status of the police storage relocation and equipment relocations. We shared the Part ridership information, which included an update on the new routes and schedules. And Part is currently planning to install an electronic fare box sometime in 2020 as well, so that's what we'll be working on for the foreseeable future.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinance review committee. Counselor Prosser.
We finally got together and finalized some of the items for council's review this evening.
Okay. And you'll be submitting that?
I'm sorry?
It's submitted.
Yeah, I believe it's.
Okay.
One of our agenda items.
All right. Efficient methods. Counselor Lebedinsky is not here. Hopefully, he can get back to us on Monday. Boards and committees. Emergency services reports. Chief.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you to all the firefighters that came out tonight to honor Joe. Last month, we did have a dinner for Joe, and it was well received, and the chief gave him a lot of gifts that probably couldn't be presented here, but, you know, he was well-recognized a month ago. So I want to thank those guys for that. As far as the fire service goes, we did have our fire committee meeting last week, and we're taking a good, hard look at ourselves. We're going to review our policies and procedures and see where we're at. And it's a pretty major undertaking, just reviewing them all and making sure they meet today, too. So that's where we'll have it at. As far as the month went, we had ninety-four fire calls, and I can report, we didn't have anything significant, but we probably lead the league in heater fires. So I'm hoping that people listening will get their heater service unchecked. And as far as EMS, they had three hundred and fourteen calls in the Borough this month. So it was a pretty busy month overall for both services.
Yes.
But that's it for tonight.
Thank you. Human relations. Ms. Lovegood.
Good evening, councilors, council president, and Madam Mayor. February is Black History Month, and it's an annual celebration of achievements and recognizing the role of African-Americans in United States history. Just want everybody to be aware of that state Rep. Joe Sarisi and Senator Bob Mensch, they're going to be co-hosting an interfaith forum for the community from 6:00 PM to 7:30 PM on Tuesday, February 11th. And that's going to be held at the Carousel. And the public, everyone's more than welcome to attend that. And the commission's next meeting will be held on February 20th at 6:00 PM in council chambers, and again, all are welcome to attend.
Thank you. Ms. Penrod. Land Bank.
Today, a couple of Land Bank members and interested parties attended the Pottstown Housing Coalition Next Door. There were a lot of people there. It seems to be a very valuable means of communicating between several different groups in Pottstown, including the fact that they have a task force in the Coalition on Land Bank. So that'll be a great way to keep in touch. We're waiting on a grant request we submitted last year for, under a state program that would provide funding for us to acquire what we believe will be our first three properties for processing. And then number three, we're planning on a public meeting at the end of March to introduce the Land Bank, introduce the webpage, procedures, and to solicit interest from reputable developers, essentially, call for qualified developers under the Land Bank program. So baby steps, but we are moving.
And while you're there, tell us about the library.
Well, again, several of you were present this morning for the Hobarts Run Community Leaders Breakfast that was hosted at the library. Thank you for coming. I hope that we were able to demonstrate that we're trying to be very good stewards of the funding that you do provide to us, for which we thank you very much. You heard from me that our charity fundraiser, which right now is our largest separate independent fundraiser program, is fully subscribed for chairs and artists and sponsors. So thank you for those of you who are participating thus far in that. We're going for the one-hundredth anniversary celebration in 2021 as part of our capital fundraising campaign to help with some extraordinarily unsexy financial needs we have, such as stormwater management, sunken parking lot, hundred-year-old clay pipes, sewer piping, modern toilets. So that's going to be an awful subject. In 2019, the annual report, we note that we circulated well over a thousand print and audiovisual, no, a hundred thousand print and audiovisual items and tens of thousands of electronic downloads. So around about a hundred and fifty things were circulated, which is a lot of things. We have received about a hundred new cardholders for Pottstown alone, out of the eleven hundred that we gained overall for the year. And in February, a hundred and eighty kids are signed up for a Saturday reading program, which is focusing on the 1920s. Incidentally, that's when Wonder Bread was introduced. So some of them had their first slice of Wonder Bread, I don't doubt. And we're active with voter registration forms, census forms. We're going to try and do something surrounding the census. The library sits at the corner of four separate census tracts in the middle of not-so-great census participation. And so we're hoping that maybe in May, we can drag people into our computers to get them to sign up if they have not yet responded to the paper form or to door knocker. So we'll stay in touch with all the census people on that.
Very good. Rickett Center. Counselor Kripo.
Lydia from the Board of Town Special Services is here.
Oh.
Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Thanks for having me tonight. So we're really excited to give an update on the Rickett Center. We opened on January 1st after doing some upgrades to the building, phase one. So January 21st was our first day open. Twenty-one people were in attendance. February 4th, we had sixty-eight. So a big increase in a short period of time. Right now, we're open Monday through Friday, 11 to 8, with Saturday hours coming in March. So on February 4th, when we had sixty-eight attendees, we offered after-school academics program, academics program, which is homework help and tutoring, a meal. We had the dance team, soccer for success, and karate training. So there are volunteers that are leading the programs that are happening in the building, which is fantastic. We will be expanding in the next couple of weeks with a crochet group, art classes, yoga, and hopefully more than that also. We're looking at basketball and possibly a baseball program as well. We do have an open house next Thursday, February 13th. It's from 2:00 to 6:00. The Pottstown Ministerium is hosting this. And I also wanted to say thank you to the Pottstown Ministerium and the Hill School because they did the Martin Luther King Celebration. And the collection that day was just over $3,100, and that was provided to help with the upgrades that we've been doing to the building. So what we're calling Phase One of the upgrades was focused on offering a safe and clean space for the people coming through the building. So included cleaning, exterminator, getting the alarm and fire system upgraded. We painted the whole downstairs and the gym. There was new vinyl trim installed in the rooms that needed it. New carpeting put in the computer room. There was nothing in terms of table, chairs, computers, so that was all installed. And we also had a dance floor put into the back room, which makes it a nice surface for the dance team, karate, different groups like that to be able to use. And then in the next week or two, there'll be a new front door installed that has a magnetic locking system like schools have. That, again, was focused on offering a safe and clean space. So there's a lot of other ideas that we want to do with the building and the space. So looking forward to continuing to work through that. I also wanted to say thank you to Parks and Rec and the Borough because Michael and the team, they were a huge help with the upgrades in the building, helping with the fire system, lighting installs, and ceiling tiles that needed replacing, which was a big task. So thank you very much for your help with that. So we are beginning to plan for the summer, which is a big task. So we'll, more information to come on that. And we need volunteers. So we have volunteer packets. They're on our website. We also have a Facebook page, and then they can be emailed or picked up in person at the center if anybody's interested in volunteering. It can be anything from leading a class to just helping with the meal that's served or helping with the after-school program. We're looking at other models for the after-school program and how we can improve the one we're offering, where it's more of a one-to-one or one-to-two ratio of helpers, whether they're teens or adults, helping the children with their homework and some academic studies and reading. So that was everything I had for an update. Does anybody have any questions about the programs or what we're doing in the building?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pottstown School District. Counselor Lindsay.
So when the school district had their meeting, I was in Einstein Hospital. So I didn't go to the meeting, however, comma. They live-streamed it, so I saw it the next day. So I saw it that Friday. And I missed a good meeting because they had, the high school teachers had a hundred percent growth, and the highest level in the state that measured for math, reading, and biology scores. So they had, you know, they had announced different teachers. There was a lot, so I wasn't going to, you know, announce it. But you can see the live stream on Facebook, and I thought that was great that our teachers did a hundred percent. So kudos to the Pottstown high school teachers. So I thought that was really great.
Wow.
Yes, a hundred percent growth for the students, so.
Very good. Thank you. Mayor's report. Do anything interesting this month?
So Peggy did a lot of my work for me, so thank you. I am also on the 2020 Complete Count Census Committee for Montgomery County. And just to say that this is extremely important for everyone to respond. As Peggy said, I think Pottstown in 2010 was, had only reported, seventy percent of the population had reported. If we could be, I would love to say that we were a hundred percent for 2020. If we can get to ninety, I will be extremely, extremely happy. Of course, we are going to be doing competitions with Royersford and other Montgomery County municipalities so that we can show them that Pottstown is number one in reporting. Again, this is important because that funding determines, the count determines the amount of funding that we get for our schools, for infrastructure, for senior programs, for SNAP, for just so many things. So there's going to be five mailings that go out starting May, sorry, no, March 12th through the 20th. You will be able to start to respond by phone or online. April 1st is Census Day. If anyone knows anyone at the airport that wants to make a big sign to pull behind their airplane or writes in the sky, Pottstown's April 1st Census Day, I would greatly appreciate it. We could get some media there and get some publicity. So you're supposed to report as of April 1st. Who is in your household? If you do not respond by May, you will start getting knocks on your doors. So please look out for mailings starting in mid-March. You can go online and start reporting. I have sample questionnaire here in Spanish and in English. The questionnaires are translated in sixty different languages. Here is a sample of some of the questions they are going to ask you. Number of people at your address, who's living there, what their relationship is to you, your phone number, your name, and your race, age, date of birth, and sex. And I'm pretty sure that's not a yes or no question. So if you have any questions, go to 2020census.gov, and more to come on that via social media, and hopefully we can get something on our webpage. So that's the census. Then I would like to say a huge, huge thank you to Sandy Higston from Philadelphia Magazine. She came out and spent a couple hours with me to interview me. And we are now in the February edition of Philadelphia Magazine. It's about millennial mayors. So I'm in there along with Royersford and Phoenixville and Bridgeport. And it's titled, "Small Town Hero." We got a nice plug in Philadelphia Magazine, and I took Sandy for the interview to J.J. Rattigan's, so they got a nice little plug in here. And just for the record, I want to clarify that I really had nothing to do or was not responsible for bringing in Santa via dragon boat to Pottstown. I can't take credit for that. I was merely a cheerleader on the sidelines, but Alex Digpen and Peggy Lee Clark from PAID deserve all the credit for that. So if you'd like to read the article, I don't have the online version. I have a scanned version. I don't know what the link is. I don't think we can get one, but I have an extra copies up here if you want to read about how cool Pottstown is. And we went to our Community Leaders Breakfast meeting this morning. Trinita was there with me and asked me, since I was writing things down, to kind of run through some of the things that are going on. So we've got the Seussical Musical, which is coming up on February 29th. Tickets are $5, I believe. If you would like to be more generous and attend the luncheon at 12, before the musical at 2, the tickets are $50. There is youth community squash, starting on Sundays at Hobarts Run. There's a block cleanup competition that Hobarts Run and Reading, well, I guess Pottstown and Reading are going to be having. You are all supposed to dress as superheroes and clean up our town on March 28th, and we're going to be competing with Reading. And April 25th, cemetery cleanup. The Pottstown newsletter came out from Parks and Rec today, I believe, Michael.
Links were corrected today, so I could.
Okay, great. We have sushi now at the terminal. Unfortunately, I have not yet gone, but I promise that I will go this weekend. As many of you saw on Facebook, February is, I'm deeming February to be fist bump February. There's a huge, lots of flus going around. My household got hit really hard. Thankfully, knock on wood, I haven't gotten it yet, but as you know, we all shake lots of hands and interact with each other. So if we could help to stop the spread of germs through Pottstown, I would greatly appreciate it. Wash your hands, and let's protect a lot of our citizens that are undergoing chemotherapy treatments who have weakened immune systems. There's fundraisers at the Carousel for Ryers Farm on the 14th of March. There's also an interfaith forum at the Carousel on February 11th. Montgomery County Community College is having a blood drive on February 23rd. And from what I hear, we're going to have a beer fest in March. Just 21st? Okay. And, oh, did I mention that I went to the Elks Charity Ball? It was really, really well done. I'd like to thank Lynn Pollan. She did a phenomenal job decorating. The theme was kaleidoscope, hence my nails. And also, I'd like to thank the high school culinary class for making dinner for that event. It was phenomenal, and those kids are pretty talented. One last thing, if you could continue to keep Bishop Everett-Dubnim in your thoughts and prayers for a swift recovery, and if you see him on Facebook, you can let him know. We all miss him, and we wish him the best. I think that's it.
Very good. How about some manager?
All right, very well. Well, first, I'm thrilled to announce that we have selected a new finance director. So we have selected Ann Muletsky. She has her master's in business administration and finance, and she'll be the Borough's new finance director. So Ann will begin on February 12th and shadow Janice Lee until Janice's departure on March 18th. Most recently, Ann was a Senior Site Controller at Limerick Nuclear, where she is responsible for overseeing a multimillion-dollar capital and operations budget. Ann is also involved in various nonprofits locally and is a product of the Tri-County Leadership Academy. And later this month, she'll be awarded the Community Champion of Excellence Award as part of the Tri-County's Young Professionals Awards Gala. So everyone, please take some time to welcome Ann aboard to the Borough team. Another personnel note, we have a retirement. Police Captain Robert Thomas submitted his 90-day notice that he will be retiring from the Pottstown. from the Pottstown Police Department and leaving on the drop program on April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. So, uh, thank you, Captain Thomas, for, for your service here. We are planning to have a joint school board meeting. Uh, we've, it's been a while since we've gotten together with the school board and we now have a lot of projects and topics that we're working on together. And it's appropriate to get everyone updated and, and talking again. So we will be providing updates on our walk-in bike educational program as well as, uh, PAID and their economic development efforts, the Sustainability Plan, Light Remediation Efforts and the ULI Study. So that'll take place at the School District Administration Building, six-thirty, February twenty-seventh. In response to some of the citizen comments we received, uh, last month's meetings, we sent out our LNI team to follow up on the dog complaints at four forty-one Johnson Street. We, uh, also, uh, put in a request to the SPCA for a visit to the property and that was, that was granted. So SPCA went in, they did their inspection. And what they had found was that the condition of the animals and the, and, and the property, seemed to be in pretty good condition and the dogs were, were well ca- well cared for and there were no signs of, of neglect. If you recall, the neighbors asked council to also look into placing a restriction on the number of, um, pets or dogs allowed per property. And I believe several years ago, um, when council previously discussed implementing ordinance restrictions on household pets, it was met with some resistance from PETA and other animal rights activists in the area due to the burden it further restrictions placed on the majority of good standing pet owners. So that said, LNI will continue to coordinate with SPCA to regularly monitor, um, the property for animal odor, animal waste and other property code violations. Um, we, we, they did give us their express permission to enter their property to do inspections at any time, so we don't need permission to go on to their property. And, uh, at this point, we're, we've been through, uh, been before the judge six times on this property. Uh, we sent our LNI staff down each, each time. And the judge, you know, agrees that, you know, we should have permission to enter the property. And at this point, um, typically we have to follow a process in order to have violations addressed. So there's first a, a notice sent out, then, then a waiting period and then a violation. Uh, at this point, the judge is in agreement with us that there will be no more notice sent, sent out. It will just be citations at this point, um, that will be sent to that property. So, um, we'll continue to monitor it, um, but that is what we found with that property. Sure.
Did the, uh, owners know that that inspection was gonna happen? Did they know ahead of time?
I'm not sure, but they will not be aware of when, if and when future inspections will be occurring. I can tell you that.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. I mean, I'm, I'm assuming the first one, they were made aware of it. Uh, I mean, they, they're reporting, my team is reporting that, you know, they are seeing progress with the property. She's, she's picking up better after the dogs, um, keeping the house cleaner. And, um, you know, she understands that we're, we have to look out for the, the greater good of the community and protect the community with this, with this effort. And, um, it's been a process, but we're, we're trying to work with her, but we're not being lenient at the same time. Second citizen concern was of stormwater inlet and conveyance issues on Warren Street. And, uh, this was responded to via email from me. Uh, and a former, formal letter was also prepared and sent by our Public Works Director. If you recall, this was in the area of Warren Street, also where Washington Street meets, uh, Wilson Street. Uh, in summary, there are two issues reported. Stormwater conveyance and stormwater infiltration into our sanitary sewer. The stormwater conveyance system was inspected visually by the camera and also, um, by looking at it, uh, in locations during high and low flow rain events. And our team found that the inlets and the stormwater and pipes in that area were in great condition. There were no damage or blockages reported, uh, on that system or downstream along Washington Street. And the stormwater system, what we have found is adequate for most, most storm events. Um, it would be very difficult and co- costly to add capacity to handle greater flows from excessive rain and events that have been experienced more frequently in recent years. If you recall, two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen were some of the wettest years on records, on record. And, um, you know, our systems weren't designed with that in mind. It would be of little benefit to increase the pipe size on Wilson Street to try to a- address the increased amount of rainfall if the downstream pipes cannot handle the increased amount of flow. So what would need to be done is the system would have to be evaluated downstream to determine if an increased pipe size would be needed to allow for more capacity to throw, to flow through that, that section. And that study may have to involve the entire collection system all the way to the Skooka River. So we're talking about a very extensive study and potentially very costly and extensive construction to address this issue, which to our knowledge is just on Warren Street. And obviously, the borough would not be in a position to provide the funds for construction. We would rely on grants for any type of construction of that scale. And one of the caveats there is that the grant funding we would seek for this project would, would directly compete with the grant funding we're seeking for the stormwater arch rehabilitations because they're the same pots of money. And right now, um, you know, unless I'm directed differently, arch rehabilitation is currently a priority. For the sanitary sewer issue, the team did find a sagging sewer main pipe on Washington Street and a hydraulic bottleneck at the intersection of Washington and, and Wilson Street. Both these items were reconstructed, excuse me, reconstructed this fall under the Authority's sanitary, um, sewer collection system improvement projects. So the improvements have been made to date to the sanitary sewer in that location will improve the amount of water that can move through the pipes. However, just with the stormwater system, once the pipes are filled to capacity from stormwater infiltration, it takes more time for the water levels to recede back, back to normal. So I think that in conclusion for both of those issues is that, you know, our pipes are handled, are, are designed to handle a certain amount of, of volume. Um, and once rainfall exceeds those volumes, uh, there are issues can be created, usually over a short period of time, you know, clearing, uh, fifteen or twenty minutes after the rain event has, has passed. And then lastly, I just wanted to make council aware that we've been receiving development interest for borough property located at one ninety-one and one ninety-three South Hannover Street. This is also known as the Hess Lot, located at the corner of College Drive and, and Hannover Street. In reviewing the requirements under the Borough Code for disposition of, uh, public property, the borough would have two options to convey this property. The first option would be to list it for public auction under the Borough Code. And the borough, um, would have the op- option to sell that, uh, at auction to the highest bidder. The drawback to that option is that there, other than what would be required through the zoning and land development approval process, this option would allow council little control as to the eventual use of, of the property to make sure that it's the highest and, and, and best use. And also use that, quite frankly, it's going to have the greatest impact to our tax revenues. So the second option would be to convey the property to an economic development entity. And, um, they, they would be able to convey the property that in their determination would be the highest and best use, but not necessarily the highest bidder. If you recall, PAID, Pottstown Area Industrial Development was originally conceived, um, for exactly this purpose. And in the nineteen eighties, it acquired and sold parcels in the Circle of Progress area. This second option also frequently, is also frequently used by the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority for publicly owned properties, uh, by municipalities, uh, throughout the county. So it's not something that's, that's a new idea by any means. Given that this property is located in a key gateway location, we're currently considering the pros and cons of the two conveyance methods. And after meeting individually with council members to determine their preferences, we will aim to have a, a recommended conveyance method for council's consideration in the upcoming months.
Very good.
And that's it.
Edit. Thank you. Now we have a presentation from Paula Bickelman.
There, is that okay?
It'll come up there.
There, oh, right, technology works. Good evening, Councilor, Madam Mayor. Uh, I am Paula Bickelman. This is my husband, Robert Bickelman. We, uh, own and operate Fine Solutions Properties in the borough and surrounding areas. Um, we are proud to say that we rehab places to live that Pottstown is proud to call home. Tonight, we are here because we are requesting, um, to get relief from the requirement of applying for conditional use, uh, at sixty-seven Walnut Street. Uh, just so you understand a little bit of who we are, uh, we live in Upper Potts Grove, just over the line. We're really, we, we consider ourselves local because it's about a two-second walk and we're in Potts. Um, but, uh, we have been living in the area about twelve years. We've been rehabbing properties in the borough for the last three years. Um, Rob is a plumbing engineer, um, and, uh, my arm of our business is marketing. And obviously, I'm IT, as about.
She's IT.
But, uh, we wanted to just quickly say that there's a big difference between rehabilitating and flipping. Um, there's, I'm sure all of you are aware that there are people all over Pottstown that are doing different things. Uh, we believe in doing it right. We work very closely with the people in LNI. Uh, we have a master plumber, master electrician, uh, everyone is licensed bonded. We work very closely, uh, with Hugh Place and, uh, Winter absolutely helped me with getting ready for this evening uh, because this is, uh, one of our biggest projects to date. Um, the difference with rehabbing and flipping is we rewire houses and, uh, take plumbing completely down to the, uh, concrete of a stack pipe and bring it back up again and jackhammer it out if it's necessary. Um, we've heard horror stories of people who have, um, bought homes that were flipped um, to find out that roof tar was used on their, on their sewer pipe, on their stack pipe that had to, uh, blow up on them three months later. And that's not what we do. Um, and we would like your support in, uh, in this application. And, uh, I guess our biggest why is because we want to take care of our neighbors. Um, we have volunteered most of our lives in various capacities and we feel like this is the biggest impact that we can do for the rest of our lives to support the community in this way. So, uh, sixty-seven Walnut Street, we are requesting relief from the requirement of applying for conditional use. Uh, we're going, we want to convert the property from a forty-eight-hundred square foot warehouse um, into four two-bedroom apartments. Um, it is the most compatible use for the neighborhood and two-bedroom is the greatest need. We've done a verbal survey of many people that, uh, we know in the neighborhood who are reputable landlords, um, who have told us that, uh, there's a waiting list for two-bedroom apartments with every person that we know. Um, this is, this is, uh, from Google Earth, uh, sixty-seven Walnut Street as a warehouse is the last of anything industrial really in that, in that neighborhood. Everything has become residential condos, homes, et cetera. Um, next to that is the traffic, uh, volume survey that we, uh, had commissioned. And you can see that it actually will decrease significantly, the traffic in that neighborhood by converting into apartments. Uh, parking, we are blessed with a huge parking lot, which we are planning on having at least two spots per apartment. Plus, we will ha- make sure that there is a handicap van accessible, uh, and, uh, parking spot and we're going to have in a apartment that is handicapped accessible as well. Uh, this is what the inside of the building looks like as of to, nah, yesterday. Uh, we have started some demolition inside. They basically just put drywall over the problem on the inside. Um, and when you drive past, you can see that there's a lot of windows covered up and that's what it looks like on the inside right now. Uh, and that's why we're asking for urgency and getting approved for this so we can, uh, turn this around before the building gets even worse. Um, the, the reason why we made the comment about where is it? Um, is because when we told people we were buying this building, everyone was like, where? Where? Huh? Because it's just this block grade building and we plan to revitalize the exterior so that it becomes a, a focal point and then it. Uh, this is what it looks like as of last night. I took this picture just last night. Um, the Ivy is taking over. The roof has a hole causing all that water damage on the outside and the inside. Uh, you can see it is, uh.
Abandoned vehicles included.
Yeah, abandoned vehicle included, yes. Um, but there is a sticker on it that will be going soon. Uh, but this has become kind of a, uh, one, one abandoned vehicle has been removed already. But this, this property's become a magnet for not great things. We want to keep that out of the neighborhood for the families. Um, so three nineteen point five is traditional town neighborhood. Um, it is twenty-four hundred square feet on each level and the requirement's twenty-five hundred square feet. So we're only short by one hundred square feet, uh, in order to meet the requirement. Um, and at twenty-four hundred square feet per level, there's ample space for a two-bedroom apartment on this level. Um, and the que- the, the biggest question I know all of you want is, can you get that done? Can you get it done timely? Can it be quality and can it be done respectfully? And to us, that is respect, not just for the people in the neighborhood, but also respecting the history of Pottstown. Uh, this is an example of a property that we did, uh, ten months ago. Nine hundred North Franklin Street. You can see the Jumanji of the house. Um, there were animals, uh, the I- again, Ivy, the buildings love Ivy. Um, almost every window was broken. Young people have been going in and making little movies. We found out from neighbors, they're even in the horror movies. Uh, water infiltration throughout the first floor. There was a waiting pool on the third floor catching water because the hole was, uh, bigger than a basketball in the roof.
About a four-foot round hole through the streets.
Yeah. Um, and this is what we mean about respecting history. Jesse R. Evans, former mayor of Pottstown, his wife Mary Blean, do we recognize Evans and Blean? Uh, they owned this house. They built this house. And you can see, this is north end before there was a house, that there was, there was nine hundred North Franklin. Um, and it was an amazing, uh, they, they call it the bones of the house, uh, but it definitely needed a lot of love. Um, we had lifts there. We actually kept the original slate roof. Every person we knew who rehabbed talked about tearing it down. And they said, no, 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 you don't need to tear down a slate roof. Um, and we were able to save it, uh, with simple repairs, actually. You can see the Ivy was actually getting into the home. Uh, the, the roots of the Ivy were probably five-inch diameter at their largest. Um, and this is what it looked like afterwards. Uh, everything rebuilt on the outside. The inside was needed. And the kitchen went from that to, uh, new modern kitchen. The dining room, all the hardwood floors were redone. They were not torn out. They were redone.
Original big plank frame and plank size.
Yeah. There's the waiting pool. We weren't kidding when we said a waiting pool. But it, the upstairs, um, actually became a master suite. Um, and we would bring this quality to sixty-seven Walnut Street. The downstairs needed, uh, about seven thousand dollars in mold remediation because of all the water infiltration. We do everything right to make sure that people have healthy living inside. Um, and it only took sixteen weeks to do all of that. It only took sixteen weeks. Uh, from the day we bought it, uh, the day we bought it, we had, uh.
Tree crews out there, clear, clearing the acre lot, pulling out the old house.
Yeah, that's why there was a lift. They were pulling it out by hand because they wanted to save the roof. Um, but as I said before, we have a quality team. We are respectful of the history. And in that particular project, we partnered with the Pottstown High School, uh, techs program. They assisted us in demo. They got real-world experience and we donated a lot of the materials to the school as well. Sixty-seven Walnut Street is only a hundred and ninety yards from our latest project that is on market right now at one forty-three Walnut Street. It used to be the house on the block. The couple went down on hard times. They decided to rent the house because the mark, when the market collapsed, they couldn't afford to sell their home. And then they became absentee landlords. And as a result, um, there were many police calls. There were drug squatters. Neighbors were bullied and frustrated. Uh, there was, uh, a hundred yards of cleanup. There were three dumpsters that we cleaned out. The smell was unreal because. The smell was unreal because they had a dog that was never allowed out. And as a result, all that mess was inside. The night we started, the day we bought it, we cleaned out two full dumpsters that night. We had a crew there at five o'clock at night, and they cleaned out all night. And we had people driving down the street yelling "Thank you, Jesus!" out of their windows because they were just so happy.
They moved the troubled house in the neighborhood.
Yes. This is an amazing block. It's an amazing section of Pottstown, and this one house destroyed it. And again, that's why we do what we do, because one house can take something away and one house can bring it back. So now, this is what the house looks like today. We used a local artist to do custom glass in the front door. We use local whenever we can because we even buy Santa Toga appliances because they're just such great people. But we were able to do all this in under three months as well. And so sixty-seven Walnut Street in honor of the history of Pottstown and William Van Busker Carriage Factory, which in eighteen eighty-five occupied the same piece of land. This is from the Sanborn Firehouse, eighteen eighty-five. William Van Busker Carriage Factory. Goose Run is the name of the waterway that goes actually underneath the building. So rather than people saying that they live at sixty-seven Walnut Street, we hope that they will be proud to say they live at Carriage House at Goose Run. So we are asking, tonight, we're seeking a letter of support from Borough Council, and we're requesting to not return for a conditional use hearing, and we are meeting every criteria under conditional use other than the one hundred additional feet.
I just remember blighting nine hundred North Franklin Street. What a...
All right.
You had a great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I make a comment? I can vouch for their work. They did a house right across the street from mine, or former mayor Ann Chumnuck's old house. And it is beautiful. They did one hell of a job.
Yeah, someone from Philadelphia Magazine came through Pottstown over the weekend. We're going to be at Philadelphia Magazine again in April, by the way. Yes. Yeah, they went through Pottstown with Willa State Agent and another person who rehabs in Pottstown. And they took them to J.J. Radigan's and Very Best and a bunch of other places around town to show how great they are.
Oh, I think that's because when Sandy came out to interview me, Keith Costello, who was one of the owners of J.J. Radigan's...
Yep, Keith was there.
Was telling her how somebody from Philadelphia Magazine had not come out or was not interested in Pottstown. So thanks to Sandy and Keith, got them out, and now we'll be featured again. Thanks.
I am familiar with your work at nine hundred North Franklin. I was in the house before.
Were you?
And I was there when you had open house after you had finished. You did a remarkable transformation.
Thank you.
Really did. My question on the property at sixty-seven Walnut, you have twenty-four hundred square feet.
Per level.
Per level.
Yes.
And you're making four units, so each will be about twelve hundred?
Minus common space and utility room, there'll be at least a thousand square feet of these.
For a two-bedroom unit? Okay. That's all. Anyone else?
Just a question on the previous two properties that you had renovated. How do you dispose of them, or what's your preference for disposing of them to a new owner?
Do you mean sale? I'm sorry.
Yeah, do you sell them? Do you rent them out? What do you do with them?
Yes, we, up to this point, have not had rentals because we believe absolutely in homeownership. But with this building, it's not made to be a single-family home. And leveling it would be kind of crazy because it could absolutely be a phenomenal home for people. This corner at York and Walnut was industrial in all four corners. At the time, I mean, you can see William Van Busker was there, the lumberyard was there, there was millinery across the street. It's just now, it's all residential. We want it to be that way. We have a friend of ours who owns seventy-five units, quality units, in Pottstown, and they are mentoring us through the laboring process to make sure that we are being respectful of every tenant that will be in our building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll list that for action on Monday. Okay, cable franchise agreement. That'd be you.
Yeah, so this still stands as we have it, as we had presented it previously to you. Ten-year contract, five percent of the fee, and we would like to wait until March when a representative from Comcast would be here to present to you and answer any questions that you may have about Comcast or the agreement.
Okay. Hard, Planning Commission date.
Yeah, so if you recall, we brought this idea to you last month of looking into ways in which the Planning Commission and the Harb Board can work together more efficiently. I believe that most of you had received a memo from Silsir Garner's office, kind of outlining the pros and cons of each, of each way to look at it. And at this point, it still seems like holding the Harb meetings on the same night as the Planning Commission meetings would be the best opportunity. And so we were, we will reach out, if we haven't already, to the Harb members to see if they would be open to moving that meeting night to the Planning Commission night. And we can let you know on Monday whether or not they're open to that.
Okay. Very good.
So are there any questions? No?
No. All right, Levin, is missile and zoning, master traffic and regulation ordinance amendments?
Yeah, so we have a couple here that we'd like to bring to you. Some are zoning changes and others are ordinance changes. The ordinance changes, we'd like to ask for authorization to advertise. The zoning changes, we'd like to ask for authorization to hold a hearing to review those changes. That would be the first step for both of those processes. So the first one is to eliminate the zoning requirements for downtown off-street parking. And the reason for this is that the committee believes that the downtown is essentially built out, and new uses are struggling to identify sufficient off-street parking facilities to meet the ordinance minimum standards. And what this is going to result in as the downtown gets redeveloped is an influx of zoning variance applications. And the committee feels that since council recently re-designated the downtown district for the purpose of zoning and limited, to the greatest extent possible, future development to uses that are consistent of the vision of the downtown, the committee believes that the parking restrictions will only serve to hinder favorable development. So the recommendation is to eliminate parking requirements in the downtown for existing buildings.
All buildings? Any and all?
Yeah, any and all.
Okay. And is there any limitation to the number of units or rentals inside?
At this point, it's been something that's been discussed, and, you know, one of the things, there still is a requirement for commercial on the first floor.
Correct.
So that limits the amount of units that they could have in that regard. But the general feeling of the committee, and we did discuss this in depth, was that generally, most of the existing buildings that we have today really couldn't be cut into too many apartments because they're very small buildings as they are. So one of the things that they considered was that maybe the parking requirements should apply only for new buildings or an existing building that has expanded more than a certain amount of square feet. I know the number, five hundred square feet, was thrown out there. But that's their recommendation at this point.
Okay.
Is there any other questions on the parking? All right, so the second one, this is a, this is an ordinance, a code enforcement section, is to exempt owner-occupied residential properties from the master plumbing requirements. So currently, to do plumbing work in the borough, you have to have a master plumber And the committee believes that this is unduly onerous on homeowners who may be able to perform their own plumbing work at a significantly lower cost and are best positioned to accept the risk of their work. So therefore, the committee realizes that not all properties are created equal, and they recommend that if a single-family dwelling or duplex are owner-occupied, then the owner would be exempt from this requirement. You'll note, however, they are recommending that investment properties and income-producing rental uses or apartments would still be required to use a master plumber.
Right.
So it's one of the efforts we're trying to take, one of the steps we're taking of many, to make the borough more business-friendly.
Okay, next.
The next one would be the revisions to trigger for grading and stormwater permit requirements. Presently, right now, any earth disturbance impacting an area in excess of a hundred twenty-five square feet requires a grading permit. We feel that's too low. In order to obtain that permit, the applicant is required to submit engineered plans, which meet the standards contained in section one oh five, so essentially, you know, an engineered, an engineered drawing to some extent. And the committee believes that the costs associated with this type of minor land disturbance relative to the risk associated with such work do not warrant the continuance of this practice. So as a result, the committee is recommending that grading permits only be required for land disturbances impacting areas in excess of five hundred square feet, which I believe would get you, you know, a patio or two parking spaces in a driveway. Further, the committee recommends that the triggering point for stormwater management plans be reduced. Presently, stormwater is not regulated locally unless the earth disturbance is at least one acre. The committee proposes lowering this trigger to fifteen hundred square feet to better coincide with DEP reviews and borough reviews that coincide with the DEP regulations. Also important that we look at this as evidenced by my items earlier in my manager's report, we're experiencing increasing rainstorms, intensity and velocity. So I think that it does make sense to look at this, you know, no regulations for up to an acre, that definitely needs to be reduced so that we can start to make sure that we're not getting undue stormwater runoff. Are there any questions about that one?
Any more?
Oh, I got more. So we also have revisions to the swimming pool regulations, and this will be a zoning ordinance requirement. So what we've been seeing is that small inflatable pools have been, become increasingly affordable and popular within the borough. And to allow for better use of these types of pools, which presently may conflict with setback requirements, we're recommending a couple changes. One would be to replace the definition for swimming pool with definitions for storable swimming pool, above-ground swimming pool, and in-ground swimming pool. And allow permitted storable swimming pools to be located within four feet of the property line each season. They would have to be removed at the end of each season.
So that storable above-ground was the other one?
In-ground.
In-ground, yeah, which basically...
They probably need a...
So our swimming pool regulation...
Right now, it just says pool.
Our definition covers all that, just says pool. So what we're saying is we want to break them out into specifically what they are and create regulations that make sense based on what those specific pools are.
Now, should the pools be covered? You know, in case somebody go in there?
Above-ground swimming pools are typically designed so that they're above the height requirement for children. We already have requirements for below-ground pools that do have to be fenced.
Okay. Hot tubs is in there, too. Those blow-up hot tubs. I had one once upon a time.
We'd have to check to see whether a storable hot tub or, you know, permitted hot tub would fall under this.
But it came with a cover.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Keith addressed that. I can remember who this responsible is.
Yeah, I think that's already regulated under state law. We had the same discussion. These are the same set of ordinances that we looked at last summer, and we kind of held off on them so we would wait until we had the zoning a little more in line. So for those that were on council before, this is kind of repetitive, but for the new members, you can leave where we're going with the ordinance changes.
So if there are any other questions about that one, I have two more. Flood plain cleanup is our next item that we'd like to look at. So if you recall, a while back, FEMA came in and drew new flood maps for the borough, and we also adopted FEMA's flood plain ordinance. We've discovered that we actually, when we adopted that ordinance, there were some remnants of our old flood plain ordinance that we'd never removed. And those items are now either duplicative or conflicting with the FEMA requirements that we adopted. So we would just ask that we get rid of all the redundant requirements and go with the FEMA requirements that we have in place there. And then lastly, we now have the kiosks, parking kiosks installed on High Street. And if you recall, we've adopted the parking, on-street parking regulations for High Street already. But through the rollout and through conversations with business owners and people that were using the app or the other systems, we found that the three-hour time limit was really prohibitive to people that wanted to spend their whole evening downtown, whether it's going to Steel River for a show and then having dinner and drinks afterwards. We felt like it was a little bit much to be asking them to move their cars every three hours in those situations. So we're recommending that the three-hour limitation be lifted, and that's what this ordinance would do. Additionally, I mentioned that we have kiosks which are available for payments on-street and in the lots. So we need to look at our ordinance to make sure that we speak to the kiosks in our ordinance to show that they are a viable option to pay for parking, as well as identify their locations. And the big change with the kiosks is that, like Park Mobile, they're going to go by pay-by-plate, so you won't need the ticket or the receipt anymore to put on your windshield. It'll be pay-by-plate, and it'll also be enforced by plate, so the officers will be able to pull up the kiosk app and know which vehicles hadn't paid. So you can use that to pay at a kiosk and park on-street or at any of the lots, and that's any kiosk, it doesn't matter. We also need to look at outside of the paid parking area with the Closed Loop Project and Road Diet Project on Hanover Street. Some of the parking areas were shifted on the east side to accommodate the line striping, and there were actually parking spaces created on the west side. So we now need to incorporate those into our ordinance. They would be a three-hour zone, but there would be no paid parking in that area. And then lastly, we've looked at the permit ordinances, and we feel that generally, they all look pretty good. We have residential and business permit types. We, for the most part, we did not change the boundaries of the residential or the business permit types, with the exception of the removal of a few side streets where we were not getting many applications. So I think York Street was one of them, and portions of Charlotte was another one where we would actually remove the permit requirement on those streets at this time. We also changed the permit types slightly so that residential permits are strictly for residents. And business permits now include business, employees, nonprofits, and religious... for residents, and business permits now include business, employees, nonprofits, and religious So previously, the residential permit rates are typically more of a reduced rate from the business permit rates, and so previously, we were subsidizing the permit rates for the nonprofits and the religious institutions. We would recommend categorizing them into the business category. Also, we need to remove the references to Padilla, because that's no longer a district anymore, and we now have a color-coded zone. The big change to the parking permits is that we now have, we're proposing a new reduced-rate parking permit that would allow you to park in any one of our numbered lots. So for $125 a year, you can park in any one of our numbered parking lots, it's first-come, first-served. If there isn't a space available in the lot you're looking for, you would be able to park in the next lot over. This is open to any business, any resident, any visitor, regarding, regardless of your mailing address. So this is different than the business permits and the residential permits, because those are based on your physical address of your business or of your residence. If you're located outside that area, you cannot get a permit for those. So there would, there would be, as a result of this, there would be no more reserved spaces in our parking lots anymore. They would be open for permit holders or people that want to park by the hour. What we found was that in some of the lots, with the old method that we were, we were doing the permitting, in those lots, we had spaces that were reserved and numbered, and you parked in that numbered space that was reserved for you. Well, when those people weren't there, we were losing revenue, because those lots were filling up, and nobody could park in the reserved spaces. So we think it's better to go with this reduced rate permit, let anyone park in any of our lots. And are there any questions about the parking?
So if you reduce the, if you want the hours to be weighed for the three hours, what will it be? Instead of three hours, what is it, five?
There's no time limit. It will just be that paid parking is in effect from 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m., but there's no time limit.
Okay.
Yeah.
The $125 fee that you were talking about?
Yes.
Is that a one-time, or is it payable over 12 months?
That's payable monthly, quarterly, or yearly, depending on how long you're going to be visiting, or, you know, working here, in the case of some of the businesses. And the idea for the reduced rate is that we want to try to get the longer-term parkers into our lots, so that we can free up more turnover on-street in front of the businesses. So that was the committee's thinking behind that.
Ready?
Oh, I just had a question on the kiosk. Are we replacing or fixing? Because I thought the whole point of Park Mobile was in response to our antiquated kiosks, parking kiosks.
Yeah, we've replaced them.
We've replaced, yeah.
We've replaced them all.
It's a new one right here.
So we've replaced the two that we had in the, in the Redding Lot, Lot Number One, and the Charlotte Street Lot, Lot Number Two, and then we've added four other new locations along High Street. One at York Street, one at Penn Street, one at Evan Street, and then one at the library. And all this information can be found on our parking webpage.
Okay, if there are no more questions, we'll list this for Monday to approve our solicitor to advertise. Very good. Destruction Resolution.
All right, so this is the resolution that we do every year for destruction of municipal records by the Borough Finance Administration, Licensing and Inspections, Parking Recreation, Utilities, and Police Departments pursuant to the Municipal Records Manual of December 16, 2008, and amended March 28, 2019. So you'll see in your packets, there's an appendix listing all the items that we would propose to destroy.
Not yet.
Not yet. Monday, we'll have the appendix. So by Friday evening, you can look and see the items that are listed to be destroyed.
What is our retention? Like, is it everything? Oh, okay.
It depends what the record is.
A manual, a K manual?
Yeah, and, yeah, the state has a manual, and we essentially follow that manual to a T when we go through our records destruction.
I was just curious, because that's my field.
The manual would identify all kinds of records and tell you the minimum time you have to keep them before you're allowed to destroy them. So obviously, over time, we accumulate quite a few records, and you need to act on a resolution before the records can be legally destroyed.
Do we store our records onsite or offsite?
Both.
Okay.
All right, we'll list for action on Monday. Thirteen is a fee schedule amendment.
Yeah, so recently, the Office of Open Records, or the people that blessed us with the right-to-know law, have set forth a recommended charge for different documents that we're, that we, the borough, has to produce as a part of a right-to-know request. So for a single side of black and white, we would recommend adopting a fee of 25 cents a page, and for a single-sided color, we recommend adopting 50 cents a page. And then a CD, DVD, $3, and then $5 for a certified copy. Am I missing anything there?
No, I think you hit them all, and then others are actual cost to reproduce. So they've modified what we can charge, and we're recommending that we go with the recommended charges.
Very good, we'll list that for Monday. The auditing services proposal for 2020, 2021, and 2022.
So Malley has been our auditor for a number of years now, and we're recommending that we engage with them for a new three-year contract to cover us for the next three years.
Okay. If there are no questions, we'll list that for action. Fifteen, Monco 2040 Resolution.
Yes, so this is a collaboration project that we would like to recommend for the Colbruckdale Railroad. So we took a look at our needs for the Montgomery County 2040 grant programs this year. We don't have an immediate need for them this year. The good news is that Nathaniel, who's here tonight with Colbruckdale Railroad, has actually come up with a plan that would not only help the railroad, but also help the borough in Memorial Park, where they're building the station. So they would plan to use these funds to construct pedestrian improvements to Memorial Park, and also, if permitted by PennDOT, a pedestrian crossing over to the Potts Grove Manor to allow for better connectivity throughout those facilities. Colbruckdale's seeking $200,000. They will be responsible to write the grant and submit it to us. We will just press the button and send it, and Colbruckdale will also be responsible for the 20% match requirement. So Nathaniel Gasts from Colbruckdale is here tonight. If there's anything I missed or you want to add, feel free to chime in.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any questions? All right. Gee, thanks for helping us. Okay, we'll list that for Monday evening. Board vacancies. Let me see, we have one application for Tom Hilton. And Tom, is that for both Planning Commission and Harb?
That's council's desire, yes.
Okay. We have one vacancy for Harb for a term to expire April 1st, 2024. We have a vacancy for an alternate member on KEEP, that's our economic development on Keystone Drive, and we have one four-year term on the Planning Commission. So we will list that, and if there are people that volunteer come forward, we'll handle that Monday evening. Seventeen, Hill School commencement.
I just want to say, if you recall, this gets back to the earlier item where we're talking about combining the meeting times for the Planning Commission and Harb, and I believe that Mr. Hilton, in his letter, would be willing to serve in both if there can be some sort of streamlining, streamlining between those two organizations.
Okay. Good. All right, seventeen is the Hill School commencement. They, what do they want to close? Beach?
Yes, so Hill School would like to close Beach Street on May 23rd from 8:00 to 1:00 o'clock for their commencement exercises.
Okay, and I think we do this most every year.
That's correct.
We'll list that for Monday. Eighteen, Red Horse Motoring Club slash Veteran Island Project.
Yes, so they would like to hold an event at their facility, and they're requesting permission to close Third Street between York Street and Hanover Street. This is for a fundraiser and car and bike show. The date would be April 18th, 2020, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Very good, and we've read through that. We'll list that for Monday. Nineteen, Once Again Red Horse Motoring Club for the 2020 Car Shows.
Yep, so Red Horse is back for car shows first Saturday of the month, starting in April, running through September. The car shows would be from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. They would propose to close High Street between York Street and Evan Street, closure of Cross of Hanover, Charlotte, between King and South Street as well.
Okay. Similar to last year.
So are they, is that, is that a closing of Hanover Street and Charlotte Street? Yeah, so that would be different than last year.
Oh, yeah. They did that last time.
Stopped at Hanover.
Yeah, stopped at Hanover.
They left Hanover open.
Right.
And then they left Charlotte open.
This year, they want to close it.
And they closed it.
Correct.
Wound up.
Hmm.
We'll save that for discussion.
Well, I guess previously, Hanover was closed. I think it did just go to York, correct?
Correct.
I mean, several years ago.
It did previously.
So nothing new necessarily, but different than last year.
Yeah.
Right. Last year, they held their last one in October.
Correct.
Yeah.
And they're only asking for permission through September?
Yeah, I think what happened last year is they had a very bad weather event in September, and that's why they wanted an October one as well.
It wasn't so nice in October.
No other questions? We'll list that for action on Monday.
Okay.
Ah, Red Horse Car Show Beer Garden Request.
So they'd like to hold a beer garden, I believe, in Smith Family Plaza?
Okay.
Yeah, Smith Family Plaza, and it would be for the dates of the car show.
Of the car shows. Okay, if there's no question, we'll list that for Monday. Now, we'd like to have a discussion, led by our solicitor, Mr. Garner, on council meeting rules of order and the Sunshine Act.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. In speaking with Justin and Dan, we thought it might be a good idea just to pick a couple of topics every month during the committee of the hall, just to have a little roundtable with council to kind of explain what we do during the course of the year. And sometimes, it's easier to talk about things in the abstract or theoretical, rather than having an issue in front of us that you have to vote on. So the first couple of topics we kicked around were more procedural than substantive, and we thought that perhaps it'd be good just to familiarize council, particularly the new members, with some of the things that we do all the time, but try and put a reason behind them and explain exactly what they're there for. So one of the first things that you guys did when you reorganized back in January is you passed a set of meeting rules. And the meeting rules historically have kind of been passed down from council to council. But meeting rules are really your rules, and you need them, in my opinion, and you can set the rules however you want to set them, but you want to have an organized meeting, and you want to have an efficient meeting. So the rules that you adopted at the reorg meeting, and I think you've looked at them and you have them in front of you, but they set up the framework of how we run the meetings, or how you have chosen to run the meetings. And sometimes, we have public comment, and we have discussions about different things, and part of the rules that you've adopted, on their face, encourage public comment, but at the same time, forbid technically a dialogue between the council and the person that's raising the comment. The reason for public comment is to bring issues to you, not necessarily to debate that, but certainly, you're permitted to debate or have a dialogue with anyone you want. So for the past, I'd say, 10 or 12 years, the rules adopted by council allow the resident or the person to give a three-minute discussion, and council's supposed to listen and not necessarily engage in a debate. But I know from the past, there are times council wanted to, wanted to talk, but technically the rules stop you from doing that. Well, if you read the rules and look through them, there is a process where you can make a motion to suspend the rules, and if you get a vote of five counselors, the rules can be suspended, and you're allowed then to entertain a dialogue with the resident if you choose to do that. And we wanted to just bring all of the rules to your attention. There's only two pages of rules, but it kind of sets up exactly how you operate, and there's not necessarily right or wrong rules, but they're your rules. So just because other councils have done it this way, doesn't mean you have to do it this way, but these are the rules that are in place for right now. So during the course of the year, if you find that any portion of our meeting is unwieldy or isn't working the way you want, you all can look at the rules, and there's a process to amend the rules, and you can vote to amend it. It's your meeting, it's your rules, it's your process. So if you ever have any questions about the rules, and if you read them, it actually, some of them seem to be a little more formalistic than we actually run the meeting. Talks about, you're only supposed to talk for five minutes on a certain topic, and everybody gets a chance to talk before someone else has a chance to talk again. Usually, that doesn't happen, but the rules are there. In the event there would be a highly controversial topic, and then you would have a procedure on how council could talk, and who could talk, and the time limit, they could talk. So we just wanted to bring this to your attention, because it is a fluid document, but it is a document that you guys have approved. So if there's ever any questions about the rules or thoughts to change, you can do that. You guys run the show, so just wanted to bring that up. Any questions about the rules as they're written now? Anybody have any thoughts or concerns about the meeting process?
I just want to say thank you for bringing that to the audience's attention as well, because I've seen, you know, citizens come up and make a comment to council and get very upset because we're not, you know, they're not responding. So it's important to know that we have these rules, and that's why you're not getting a response, not because we're ignoring you.
And Mayor, you're right. Typically, I think folks expect a dialogue, and they don't get it, but the way the process is set up is we have counselors' general discussion at the end of the meeting. So if any counselor wishes to, at that point, address the person based on what was said, that's the time to do it. Again, it's not necessarily a dialogue or a debate, but it's rather, the resident has a concern, it brings the concern to your attention, and has the ability to do that. And then if you have, if you do have a comment, you have the right to provide some kind of informal, impromptu response at the time, and obviously, the borough manager's going to look into it and get back with a more formal answer. But again, there was, there was some thought given to the rules as far as why they are what they are, but if you guys don't think they're proper, you can change them. But those are the rules that you operate under today.
Yeah, and I'll just say that although we don't always respond to some of the comments, staff typically does look into each and every one of them, and where applicable, we get back to that resident to let them know, you know, what has been determined and the reasons behind that. And we're going to try to do a better job to follow up at the next meeting during my report, where I can kind of update or summarize for council what we found, because a lot of times, you know, we get hit with questions that we weren't really aware, we're kind of getting hit cold, and we have to go back and do more research and verify things before we can really give a correct and thorough answer to someone. So that's just kind of some of the process that we follow internally.
Right, I did, I did like what you did today, whenever you did comment on the previous comment.
Yeah, I liked that.
I think something should be implemented constantly.
Yes.
You know, I really, I really, you know, like that.
I agree with you, Joe. I was going to say the same thing. I like how you recapped from last meeting. I like that. I was like, my, my thing is, is that while we in the meeting, and I'm like, oh, can I say something? I'm like, Jenny, can I say? Did she say, "No"? And I'm like, okay. Because I know she's like, mm-hmm. As she's doing shorthand at the same time, I'm like, can I say something? She's like, "No." Well, that was when I was new, so now I get the, I'm learning as I go that I certain, you know, that was in the beginning. That was like, yeah, she was like, "Oh, oh, 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 oh." Now I'm like, okay. I'm like, ah, and then she stops me. But that's when, because, I mean, like reading, like at the moment, I'm not, I don't have time to be like, oh, let me read, can I see? Can I make sure I can say that? You know, so that was my, my thing, you know? So it's, it's like on-the-job training.
Sure. Lucky for you, you sit next to Jenny.
That's what I, I, thank you. I'll be at that, and when Lisa said, "Blah, blah, blah."
Any other questions, Congress?
Okay, so the next topic, again, we went procedural rules, but the other procedure I think is pretty important, and I think council really knows this, but just thought we'd go over it just in a setting where anybody can ask questions, has to do with the Sunshine Act, and everybody gets a little nervous about Sunshine Act questions and what can you talk about, what can't you talk about. So the premise of the state law is that if you're going to take official action and vote, or if you're going to deliberate and talk about agency business, you have to do that at a public meeting. There, the law clearly defines what a meeting is. It's a prearranged gathering, meaning it's not a, just a happenstance where you all walk at the same corner and run into each other, so it's prearranged. It requires a quorum of the agency, so for you guys, it needs four. Four of you need to be together, and if that happens, you can't discuss or deliberate agency business, because if you do, without having a properly advertised meeting, you've kind of violated the Sunshine Law. So I'm not suggesting anybody here violates Sunshine Law, but that's what the definition is. So what the law also says is there are a number of topics that are exempt from that public discussion. No topics are exempt from voting, but discussion and deliberation can be done in executive session for topics that the state believes are not appropriate to be done in a public setting. And so those topics most commonly have to do with personnel matters, when you're hiring, firing, or disciplining employees or personnel. If you're selling or purchasing or leasing real estate. If you're discussing litigation, both current pending litigation or threatened litigation, you're allowed to talk behind closed doors. And if you're talking about collective bargaining, meaning you're negotiating or talking about strategy for contracts, you're allowed to talk about that in executive session. And also, when the rare occasion you're acting as a judicial body, you're allowed to deliberate in executive session when you're making a decision. Typically, for the most part, that would be you when you have a conditional use hearing, although there are other times where you may be, you have a judicial component and you have the ability to hear testimony and then decide, or deliberate at least in executive session. So apart from those main exceptions, everything else is to be done in public. Just because four of you get together for dinner doesn't mean you've broken the Sunshine Law. There's certainly social events that you all can attend, and it doesn't implicate anything. I would suggest that you not talk about borough business on those occasions because that just leads to, you know, finger pointing or people think. So perception in that case is probably reality. It's probably more of a perceived thing than anything else, but it's always out there. Evans predecessor ran into four counselors and cotillos back in the mid-'90s and suddenly made stories and editorials probably for the next year and a half. And it certainly made for interesting reading. But just because four of you are together in the same room doesn't mean you've done anything wrong or improper. So that's kind of an overview of what the Sunshine Act is. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, if you have specific inquiries. I mean, I mean, the press always likes to say, ah, there are possible violations or this was talked about and probably shouldn't have been, and they have their experts to interpret the law. But for the most part, we try to make sure that everything is conducted out here in the open, and the only time we exercise executive session rights for the topics we're permitted to do that, and voting can occur in executive session has to come out here. So that's the way we try and run everything, and if Justin or Dan have anything to add or anybody has questions, I'd be happy to answer them, so.
I would just like to suggest before and after meetings, if council, just make aware that you're not all standing in front of the building, gathering around. Not that you're doing anything illegal, however, the perception is that council is violating the Sunshine Act because there are more than four of you, and it's before and after the meeting. So while common citizens have complained about this, I have stood up for you, but I just want to say, that's where people, when they're coming in and leaving the meetings, that's where it'll probably come up.
Okay.
And it would seem that it would be more prone to accusation if it happened before the meeting, rather than after the meeting, because you're done with your business.
It's already been voted.
But again, people can perceive and believe what they want. But again, just, just be cautious when, when you're, you're in a group of your peers and you have a quorum. But again, it's just more of a lesson, I guess, rather than to be caught and think that you're doing something wrong.
No further questions? All right, we are now at 22. Comments from citizens present. And the rules are, each speaker will have three minutes to address council. Council will not respond.
Justin? Oh.
Sure.
I know, right? I ain't saying nothing.
I just wanted to recognize someone that was in the crowd I didn't recognize. He was here until after the meeting started, but Justin was real excited to announce that the Tri-County Young Leadership Awards were issued to two people in Pottstown. And the firefighter that Ron Eliasipio is in the audience tonight. I want to introduce him to the crowd. He's Judy Conley, the fire stewardess of the bow and the ambulance chief. He's one of our most active volunteers. He does both fire and EMS, and he's being recognized at that gala in February. Thank you for your service to our community.
We're blessed to have such wonderful talent.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Our first commenter.
Tracy Daywalt, please.
Hello, council, hello, Mayor. I just want to thank the residents of Pottstown and surrounding areas because the animal control has asked for donations for food and blankets and stuff for all our kennels and animals that we deal with. And we've got 80 blankets from a resident from Lower Potts Grove. And I've got food, cleaning supplies, and cat food, dog food, and stuff like that from residents in Pottstown.
Thanks.
All right, Jim Lutz, please.
Yeah, the borough manager is my, answered most of my questions about 441 Johnson Street. And I thank you for that, and at least we're moving in the right direction, I believe. However, since the last court hearing, well, actually between the Fifth and the Sixth Court hearing about the number of dogs at 441 Johnson Street, it was nine at the time. Now it's 10. I, I think there needs to be a change in the ordinance or the code or whatever for the amount of dogs you're allowed in a private residence in Borough Pottstown. I understand if they do change the law and they're, and you, and you limit the number of dogs in a private residence, the dogs that are there are probably going to be grandfathered in. But when they pass on, at least you can't replace them. So maybe you can think about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further citizen comments?
Okay. How about, where are we? Counselors' discussions. Counselor Ben, anything?
No, I really enjoyed the rules that she went over, though.
Okay. Counselor Proscal.
Well, I enjoyed attending the Martin Luther King service at the Hill, although I feel kind of guilty because that's one of the few times a year I go to church, but.
I, I know I sit with you, but you certainly kept our manager busy with all the amendments and changes to our zoning and ELLI and that.
Well, I have been to work for nine months, I think.
Your committee's been busy. Counselor Lindsey.
So the mayor said everything, so I feel like she's taken everything from me. I don't have my long speech anymore. I'm kind of bad.
No, talk about the jobs, census.
Okay, yes, yes, the census people, yes, we need to make sure we get this money. So please do the census. I have to do it too, so you have to do it also. Let's see. I don't have, I feel like I'm speechless, like I don't have. I'm usually, "Blah, blah," and I don't even have it. Oh, there's a princess this weekend. The carousel having the princess down. That's this weekend. Oh, I visit the Ricket Center. It's coming along good. I was pleased to see, you know, progress in there, so Lydia, she's doing a good job. She showed me around and everything, so counselors, you guys need to go down there and check it out.
We'll be there.
Okay. Let's see, and don't forget cynical, the performance that the mayor talked about. Su-suzical, sorry. That's a cynical. But anyway, that's, I don't have it. That's it. Oh, NAACP, they have their interfaith thing with Joe and Bob in February 11th.
At the carousel, right?
At the carousel. That's at the carousel, too. Oh, and it's free ride, so bring your kids. We all can ride on a carousel for free, so. I'll be there. That's it. That's all I have.
Good. Counselor Wallace.
First, I'd like to thank Justin for all his help he's been giving me with dealing some.
Would you stay close to the microphone?
I'd like to thank Justin for his help. He's been giving me for the last, what, month or two with constituents in my ward. He's been very helpful and informative. And the only other thing I would have is the Citizens Leadership Academy, I highly recommend it. The sign up is coming up soon, so I would go online and check periodically. It's a wonderful class put on by Courtney High.
How many times?
You really do learn a lot.
How many times have you been through it?
Every class she's had, like six now.
And I had it twice, and Lisa went, so all three of us met at the Leadership Academy class. And look at us now. So just take the class, and you'll be up here with us.
It's a very good learning, learning experience. You get to see in depth of what some of the departments do in the, in the borough.
Yes, it's really, yeah, I agree with you.
Counselor Kirkland.
You know, Black History Month, remember? Black History Month. About it.
Okay.
Oh, and thank you, Chuck. So I apologize. I'm back on the census again, but I forgot. Okay, so they're still hiring. If you want us, if you're interested and you need a job, it's $27 an hour. Let me reiterate and clarify for the record, this is not a job in the borough. This is a job with the census. So it's $27 an hour. Go to 2020census.gov/jobs, or you can call 1-855-JO-B-2020. That's 1-855-562-2020 to apply. I believe they're taking applications up through March 1st. And also, Strive is looking for mentors for the middle school. Now, I would love to participate and be a mentor, and I got my clearances and everything, but unfortunately, they meet at lunch, and so work prohibits me from coming down to the middle school. So if you know of anyone who is available, retired, who wants to mentor or have lunch with some students, please contact David Charles or Laura Johnson on the school board. And you just have to get your clearances, and you'll be good to go. That's it.
Oh, I have one other thing. Mika Patterson, she was also nominated for the leadership, for the young leadership, so.
Okay.
For that gala. That's it.
I have nothing more to add. Great. We need a jury.